I'd like to call this meeting to order. This time, we don't have a color guard, so if you'll rise, we'll cite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the agenda's approved. It's now time for the superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I should say-
Where the superintendent is. This is not the superintendent.
This is not Dr. Tony Baldwin. This is Suzanne Swanger, our Associate Superintendent. Dr. Baldwin is, am I taking your first?
Nope.
Dr. Baldwin is in Wilmington with a bunch of other superintendents taking care of superintendent business. How about that?
Absolutely. Good evening, and thank you for being here. A few comments from the superintendent's office and the curriculum office. On Tuesday, administrators, counselors, staff, and law enforcement attended the Buncombe County Schools Safe School Symposium held at University of North Carolina Asheville. Attendees heard from a national speaker on anti-bullying strategies as well as social media abuse and cyberbullying. Our panel also completed or composed of school employees and community agencies, shared best practices on how to conduct an emergency if one were to occur. So, special thank you to our Safe Schools Planning Team, Mr. Joe Huff and David Thompson, for facilitating this important event. Board, we now believe winter weather is over for this school year. As a result of missing only five total school days, Buncombe County Schools no longer qualifies for the DPI mandated weather waiver that we have been fortunate to receive in past years. The waiver allowed us to start school earlier than the mandated Monday closest to August 26th. If you recall, the Calendar Committee brought two calendars to you in November, of which you approved. We will be following the first academic calendar for 2016-17. And as a reminder, school will start much later this year, and it will begin on August 29th for students. This calendar will be more compact than in past years due to the mandate of when to begin school and when to end school. Communications will share this calendar as of tomorrow with families, staff, and students so that they can prepare for next year's calendar. This is National Library Week, and we are celebrating the awesome things that are happening in our school media centers. These engaging learning spaces have changed from school libraries to really dynamic learning hubs, and we are very proud of the efforts of our 45 school library media coordinators for offering spaces not only to read, but for students to create and collaborate. Congratulations to the Buncombe County Schools Foundation. They have been awarded the Parsic Prize from Parsic Financial Wealth Management and the amount of $15,000 to support leader-in-me initiatives in some of our schools. Parsic Financial Foundation has shared over $700,000 with nonprofits serving Western North Carolina and the greater Charlotte area. Buncombe County Schools is excited to host the Top Scholars Banquet on Thursday, April 21st. This is one of our most favorite activities. It's the time that we honor our highest achieving students and their families. There will be an important press conference on Wednesday, April 20th, at 10:00 a.m. in Nesbit Discovery Academy to promote the awareness of these six legislative priorities developed through the North Carolina Association of School Administrators and endorsed by the North Carolina Superintendents Association. These priorities include increased compensation for all educators, school performance grades, and investment in adequate resources for North Carolina public schools, accountability in school choice options, and regulatory reform. This is one of four press conferences held across the state. In closing, I would like to ask Mr. Campbell to share the impact of House Bill 2.
Good. Madam Chair, Ms. Swanger, board members, good evening. The purpose of tonight's update is to give you an overview of House Bill 2, and primarily, as the first slide indicates, what is the impact of House Bill 2 specifically on the Buncombe County Schools. I will not be addressing other aspects of House Bill 2. It deals with city ordinances, it deals with state discrimination laws, and the ability to bring an action in state court or through an administrative process. Those are not issues that I'm going to be addressing this evening. Instead, what I wanted to provide this board with is an overview of what is the impact of House Bill 2 on the operations of the Buncombe County Schools, and particularly with students and employees. How does it affect the way that the school district, the administration interacts with students and employees? This is really, in my opinion, as your attorney, the first step in any new law is for you to have the opportunity to be briefed on the law and to understand what the law says. So, tonight's presentation is not intended for action or anything else. This is my opportunity to brief you on the law so that you can take it under consideration. So, with that said, let's look at how House Bill 2 does affect schools, and particularly the Buncombe County Schools. Well, first of all, what does House Bill 2 actually prohibit or mandate for public schools in North Carolina? The first point is the bill says that students, employees, and visitors must use multiple occupancy bathrooms and changing facilities associated with their biological sex. This is the provision of the bill that early on got the most exposure, the news reports and other things. You may have heard it referred to as the bathroom bill. That's because of the mandate there as to biological sex and identification with bathroom use. The law says that schools can provide single occupancy facilities. We have been doing that for years. All of the school districts that we work with have been doing that for years for one reason or another, related to a myriad of reasons. Students have been provided with the opportunity to use single occupancy facilities from time to time, and that will continue. The law doesn't impact that ability whatsoever. The law also says that the school can temporarily designate a facility for use by a different biological sex. I believe that that is a very straightforward provision. It just means that the locker room that is available for the boys' soccer team today can be the same locker room that the girls' field hockey team can use tomorrow. It just means that once you designate a particular facility, it's not a permanent designation. You can change the designation for males and females. I think that's what that provision is intended to address. It also says specifically that adults can still accompany students needing assistance into a restroom, students that have special needs, particularly our most youngest learners from time to time, as the parents in the audience and board members know, need assistance in the bathroom. And sometimes, it's assistance from a male teacher or a female teacher, and the sexes don't always line up and don't need to. So, it doesn't prevent our employees from assisting both special needs students and other students that may need help from time to time. What does it not do? And this is the thing that I don't think there has been a lot of talk in the media and something that the board needs to understand as far as schools. First of all, it does not apply to anti-bullying, anti-discrimination laws and policies that affect students, employees, volunteers, and visitors to our schools. It does not apply to Buncombe County School employment policies regarding our own employees. So, let's break each of those down a little bit more. You have Board Policy 1710-4021, 7230. The reason that policy has three designations is the 1,000 series of your policy manual is general operations, it's board priorities, board guidance. The 4,000 section is for students, and the 7,000 section is for employees. So, it covers all three of those categories. Your policy says that harassment and bullying of students, school system employees, excuse me, volunteers, or visitors that are motivated by any actual or perceived differentiating characteristics, including gender, gender identity, or sexual orientation, is prohibited. So, that is your policy as regards to harassment and bullying. No action can create a hostile environment for a student. A hostile environment is defined as two things. First of all, the student, the employee, the visitor must subjectively believe that they are being harassed. They find the comments, they find the actions to be objectionable to them and harassing to them. But also, the second part of the test is an objective standard, where it must be so severe and so pervasive that a reasonable person would also think that it was harassing. So, a lot of times, you get into things such as single comments. Can a single comment create a hostile environment? Yes, it can, if it meets both of these tests. Can several comments fail to create a hostile environment? Yes, they can. If they do not meet the test, if what is said does not meet both parts of the test, then it's not actionable. So, hostile environment is prohibited, and also, of course, placing a student, a visitor or employee, in fear of any actual harm to themselves or to their property would also be actionable under our policy. As far as our employment policy, we have always had this. The law does not prevent us from enforcing our employment policies. Our policy says that we provide all applicants with an equal opportunity for employment with regards to training, compensation, promotion, other benefits in employment, without regard to, and these are the recognized classes in law at this time, race, color, religion, national origin, military affiliation, genetic information, sex, age, or disability. So, you can see that sex discrimination is part of also the nondiscrimination policy of the school board. The last sentence is important to keep in mind, too, that all candidates will be evaluated on the merits and qualifications that they bring for the position. So, the law in no way impacts what we have been doing. I think it is also good to point out for the board that bullying and harassment is the state law, and House Bill 2 does not nullify the current state law on harassment and bullying in schools, which mirrors our policy. You can see that our policy language was taken straight from the general statute. This is the general statute that prohibits any kind of bullying harassing activities in schools. Again, it says that any kind of prohibited behavior should not be motivated by an actual or perceived differentiating characteristic. Again, the same list, including gender, gender identity, physical appearance, or sexual orientation. So, those things continue to be enforced, continue to be the law. This is the law of the state of North Carolina. The bill has been passed. I've kind of reviewed for you what it does do, what it does not do. The last piece of the puzzle that all of us are waiting on is federal law, and what does federal law say about this issue related to bathroom use and transgender students' gender identity issues? Right now, there is a case pending in the Court of Appeals that includes the state of North Carolina. The Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals includes multiple southern states, Virginia, South Carolina, and North Carolina is one of those. There is a case pending right now. It is G.G. versus the Gloucester County Board of Education. In that case, a transgender male alleged that the school board's bathroom policy violated two things, his equal protection under the 14th Amendment to the United States Constitution, and violated Title IX. Those were the two allegations asserted by the student. The board's resolution that was at issue is very short and very sweet and fits on a single slide. This was the resolution passed by the board. Whereas students question gender identity, whereas students are encouraged to seek support, advice, guidance from parents, professionals, and others, where the board seeks to provide a safe learning environment for all students and protect the privacy of all students, it is therefore the practice of that school board to provide male and female restroom and locker facilities in its schools, and that the use of those facilities shall be limited to the corresponding biological genders, and students with gender identity issues shall be provided an alternative, appropriate, private facility. So, after the Board of Education and Gloucester County, Virginia passed this resolution, G.G. brought the lawsuit. So, the first issue is Title IX. Most of us are familiar with Title IX in the context of equal opportunity for students, particularly in sports. Title IX was passed to make sure that there was gender equality in schools, especially in sports activities, make sure that females had enough opportunities to meet the interest of female students, and to also make sure that the equipment, the fields, the facilities that females were using were on par with what males were offered. The question before the court right now that we're waiting for a ruling on is, does gender discrimination, does it equal sex discrimination under Title IX? Because Title IX clearly prohibits discrimination based on differences in biological sex, biological males versus biological females. Does it also prohibit gender discrimination? Well, the lower court in Virginia, the district court or the trial court judge, did not answer that question. Instead, what the judge did was he pointed to the Title IX regulations, and there is a sentence in the Title IX regulations that says that schools may provide separate toilet, locker room, and shower facilities based on sex. So, the judge pointed to that provision and said, no, the federal government has said providing these separate opportunities is legitimate, and he denied any kind of preliminary injunction on that basis. Again, what Congress had in mind when they passed that at the time they passed it, and whether they intended for that to apply to gender identity issues, is certainly anybody's guess as to what the intent was at the time. Some have said this is merely an expression, that it was okay to have a boys' locker room and a girls' locker room, and the federal government wanted to make sure, or Congress rather, wanted to make sure that there was no misunderstanding as to the scope of Title IX when it was passed. It is good to remember that this case was on a request for an injunction, not the trial of this issue. And anytime a party goes to a court for an injunction, that's called preliminary relief from the court, you have to show two things. You have to show you will be irreparably harmed if the court doesn't step in immediately, and you have to show that you have a substantial likelihood of success on the merit. So, not just you have a good chance of winning, you have a very good chance of winning. So, it's already a very high standard for courts to grant this kind of relief prior to a trial. The court went on to say that although the Office of Civil Rights has issued some letter rulings regarding transgender students, those are not law. Those are merely the opinion of the administrative office and the executive branch that enforces laws. Their guidance, their letters, their opinions do not have the force of law, so the judge rejected any consideration of that. The second claim, of course, was equal protection. We've covered Title IX. There, the judge said, I just don't have what I need to grant this type of relief. There are questions here. The first question is, G.G. apparently used the male bathroom for seven weeks. The judge said, we need to know more about that. Did anyone complain? Were there any problems? Were there any issues? What are the facts behind that? And then the judge said, there is a real legal issue here, and I think the only editorial comment I'll offer is that people have differences of opinions on this legal question of where do rights of different people begin and end, and what is the scope of those rights? And the judge said, I think correctly, that's the crux of this. Are there legal rights to having a single gender, single biological sex bathroom and privacy that folks share? Then what are the rights of transgender individuals in our community? How do those two expectations intermesh? What are the legal rights? Where do the legal rights of some start, where do the legal rights of others begin? And that is the question that the courts are going to be struggling with, and I think that's also a question in our society that people are struggling with and having conversations about this as well, too. So, the judge said, just on a preliminary injunction, I'm not ready to answer the question about what is the scope of legal rights. That needs to be fleshed out a little bit more in a case. So, that is the posture on which it went up to the Fourth Circuit. The court said that also G.G. could not show irreparable harm. So, where are we now? The judge's order is on appeal, and oral arguments were heard in January of this year. So, we are expecting an opinion in this Fourth Circuit case literally any day. There is nothing left for the courts to do except for the judges to agree on their opinion, to write the opinion, and to issue it. That opinion, I want everyone to understand, given that we're in the preliminary injunction phase, that opinion may take on the central core legal rights and issues that are the heart of the case. That opinion could also simply provide the trial court with some guidance without making any conclusive determinations and remand the case back to the trial court. So, we're waiting for a decision to see what federal law is at this point. So, state law, we know some things that it does do, we know some things it doesn't do, and on the federal law side, we're just waiting to see what the decision of the Fourth Circuit is. So, that's my presentation for you to take under consideration and advisement, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. At this time, we'll have employee recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Swanger, board members, assembled guests, we are very fortunate to recognize, and very honored, actually, to recognize three employees for 20 years of service in public schools here in North Carolina, and we are going to start about, furthermore, I always like to go back 20 years. 20 years ago this month, the number one song, anyone want to guess, by Celine Dion? You don't know Celine's song? It's not Titanic, no, that was 97. It was "Because You Love Me." That's right. Chicago Bulls won 72 games in the NBA season. Now, that's a record that'll probably never be broken, ever. It was broken last night. Golden State, all right, all right, so maybe it will be broken. I stand corrected. But what will not change is that we have 20-year employees to recognize tonight. We begin from the Maintenance Department, Mr. Brian Black, come on down. Brian! Some goodies for you, Brian. And I always ask a question. Are you ready for a question?
Sure.
Two questions. What do you do in maintenance? Tell us all.
HVAC mechanic. Heating and cooling.
You keep us comfortable, is what you say, right?
I attend.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, how'd you get into working in the school system? How'd that happen?
Came out of high school, needed a job with good benefits, that's where I started.
I want to say something like Buncombe County Schools is an outstanding place, or-
I wanted to add that. Congratulations for graduating from Reynolds and continuing on.
Reynolds, because that's much, much better. Thank you. Mr. Pliss, would you come on up, please? And I'm going to step out because these folks are far better attracted, more attracted than I am. Head to the Inca District from Sand Hill Venable Elementary, Ms. Kathy Olivo. She is a teaching assistant. Come on, Kathy, I had to practice, and I still tripped over. Come on down. Kathy, obviously, the angels are looking down on you, your first grade teaching assistant. Talk about patience and how you're able to maintain it all day.
Just get used to it. You just block it.
Block it. Mrs. Swanger, you hear that? We just block it. When you get angry with employees, just block it out. Well, listen, thank you for your service, and come on down, Mrs. Swanger from the Inca District, Max Queen.
Hi, many years working for the law.
So, I think we've all learned something tonight, just block it out. Just block it out. All right. And last, but certainly not least, from the Owen District, Owen Middle School, Walter Moore. Walter, we're not going to let you get away that easily. Been in education 20 years. Talk about how you decided to get in it and kind of what you learned.
I started working with kids on the baseball team and really enjoyed it, and walked in the Education Department at Boone, and they said, if you go into education, you're going to always be rewarded. And I thought that was going to be something really to look forward to.
Has it been rewarding?
It has been rewarding. Almost every day has been fun.
Oh, honestly, we love that. From the Owen District, Chip, come on up, please. Mrs. Swanger.
That it?
That's all, the employee recognition, Madam Chair.
Okay, so now, we're ready for good news.
All right, and with our first bit of good news, I'm going to welcome up to the podium Mr. Robert Waller, who's the BCS Cultural Arts Specialist, and he's going to introduce us to some outstanding and award-winning students from all across Buncombe County Schools and Western North Carolina. Mr. Waller, come on up, please.
I just want to talk a little bit about our Scholastic Art Awards, and we're going to recognize one student from A.C. Reynolds High School. To give you just a little background, since 1923, the Alliance for Young Artists and Writers Incorporated has conducted the National Scholastic Art Awards to encourage and recognize student achievements in visual arts. The program is conducted on a national level in cooperation with 80 regional affiliations across the United States. The original affiliations for the Western North Carolina region are the Asheville Art Museum and the Asheville Art Section of the American Institute of Architects, with additional sponsorships provided by the Center for Craft, Creativity, and Design. This past year, the Asheville Art Museum received 630 entrances from students in 34 schools across our region. The judges carefully viewed each entry in the categories of art portfolio, ceramics and glass, comic art, design, digital art, drawing and illustration, fashion, jewelry, mixed media, painting, photography, printmaking, and sculpture. From those 132 works, from those entries, 132 works have been recognized by the judges as Gold Key, Silver Key, or Honorable Mention Award recipients. Buncombe County Schools students received 53 of the 132 awards given at the ceremony. 33 of those 53 were awarded to students from A.C. Reynolds High School, their third year in a row for winning the most awards. I would like to introduce you to Mary Bryden, who is a visual arts teacher at Reynolds High School, along with her daughter, Julia, come on up, please, who received 15 of those awards, six Gold Keys, three Silver Keys, six Honorable Mention, and two of her Gold Keys were also American Visions as well. And I'm going to turn it over to them. They're going to talk to you just a little bit about art.
Industry leaders, CEOs from all over the world, including the United States, have been asked, what is it that you're lacking in terms of employment? When you're hiring folks, what are you seeing? And one of the main things that they said they lacked were more people with innovative ideas and creative problem solving. And so, that is a challenge that all of us face for our 21st century learners, is that we want to encourage that creative problem solving. Well, I feel like, of course, I'm a little biased, but in the arts, I feel that it's a critical component, along with the science and the math and all the other curriculum. But in particular, so in the arts program, one of the things I like to encourage is not only creative problem solving, but also to take the concepts and the struggles that are out there in real world and be able to express yourself, and be able to talk about those tough issues, and in the process, be able to think about them in a creative way. So, I'm here tonight to really brag on not only all of our students, which, again, have just continued to make us so proud at Reynolds High School, but I have a special privilege to just brag on my daughter a little bit. She truly is one of the hardest-working kids I've ever had in my classroom in the 10 years I've been teaching, and, gosh, she won a lot of awards. But one thing I want to just close with before she tells you a little bit about that, is that it looks like Illinois Tech is going to be the place where she's going to go. She wants to major in mechanical engineering, but the reason that she got her full ride there, they sent us a letter and said, we're so excited to have Julia, because one of the main factors was that she had her art ability and her 3D modeling skills that she's learned at Reynolds, and that has been a key component, is why she's- But one thing I want to just close with before she tells you a little bit about that, is that it looks like Illinois Tech is going to be the place where she's going to go. She wants to major in mechanical engineering. But the reason that she got her full ride there, they sent us a letter and said, we're so excited to have Julia, because one of the main factors was that she had her artability and her 3D modeling skills that she's learned at Reynolds and that has been a key component is why she's there. So I'm very proud of our program at Reynolds High School and I'm very proud of the arts in general, because it is truly the key component to our future. So here, without further ado, is my daughter, Julia Bryden, and she's going to tell you just a little bit about one of the things that she's been learning and the concepts that she's grew so tremendously in the last four years. So, come on, Julia.
Thank you for that introduction and I'm very honored to be here. Thank you for... Well, first of all, I'd just like to say that art has helped me in so many ways that are beyond just creativity. I know a lot of people think that art is just about, like, you take art in high school and then you go into the art field and it's all about either advertising, movie making, or painting. But for me, it was more about interdisciplinary skills and creative problem solving. And I've found that art has helped me in every one of my classes, rather than just in the art field. I was inspired from my concentration, actually, through my AP World class with Ms. Hudzik, who's amazing. She taught me about the cult of domesticity and that really got me involved in feminism and interested in the women's rights movement. And so that was my inspiration for my concentration over these years in art, and some of those are outside. But I started with the, like, primordial role of women in society, which was initially just to have children, pretty much. And, I mean, it has evolved in different cultures and across time periods. And what I really wanted to show is the culmination from being pretty much the homemakers to having an opportunity to do anything in society. And there's women involved in STEAM and STEM jobs that would never have the opportunity without their rights, that these women have fought for. And that's really my goal in making art. And then transitioning into this year, I've been really focusing on 3D modeling and how I can transition my two-dimensional skills into three dimensions. And that has been so interesting and it's really helping me with college applications because with being able to 3D print my 3D models, I can, like, create new designs for potential mechanical engineering devices or anything. And that was also a big role in my scholarship to Illinois Institute of Technology. And so I'm just so honored to be receiving all of the awards. And art has helped me in every way possible and I encourage each and every one of you to be inspired and to create. Thank you.
Julia, if you'll step out here, we're going to give you another award. Madam Chair, it was brought to my attention that if the post-secondary education doesn't work out, perhaps Julia could be the stand-in for the AT&amp;T Commercial Girl, she looks just like her. So, keep it in mind, don't just brush it aside. Alright. Madam Chair, from the art world to the wonderful world of science, I now welcome up Mr. Brian Macarelli, our BCS Science Specialist, who will now showcase one of our outstanding elementary school science teachers who has been recognized on the national stage. Mr. Macarelli.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, Ms. Swanger. I just want to speak for a second about Julia and just say congratulations to her. From a science specialist point of view, that's just a heartwarming tale to see the marriage of science and art together. And for her to see that at such a young age is just a beautiful thing. So fantastic and a nice segue into what we're going to do here, which is celebrate one of our teachers, Ms. Sherry Ryan Bailey, teaches 5th grade at Oakley Elementary. And she was recently a recipient of a pretty prestigious award, a national award. And before I let Ms. Carla Billups, our STEM coach, speak about the award itself, I just want to express my gratitude to Sherry for the work that she does every day with our students. She is a fantastic teacher, a quintessential teacher, really. In terms of her content knowledge, her craft, it's exemplary. And, but most importantly, maybe, is her ability to keep on learning, which I think is the hallmark of a good teacher. And I think that should be recognized. And I'm glad that Veneer has recognized her for that. Right now, I want to turn it over to Carla. She's going to talk more about the actual award. So this is Carla Billups, our STEM coach for Buncombe County Schools.
Every year, Veneer, who is a company who makes technology for use in classrooms all the way through college, gives awards with the National Science Teacher Association. They give three in college, they give three in high school, two in middle school, and one elementary award nationally. And so, and these awards are based on ideas from the teachers of lessons they've done and trying to incorporate more technology for their students. And so this year, Mrs. Ryan Bailey came up with a really great idea and it was submitted and she won the national award from Veneer and NSTA, the only elementary one in the whole country. And so... With that award, she gets to purchase $3,000 worth of Veneer equipment on the veneers. Mr. and Mrs. Veneer are very huge supporters of science education and they are there shaking hands of all the teachers who won. They also paid her way to go to the NSTA National Convention in Nashville that occurred over spring break and she was very happy to be able to go, even that took part of her spring break. And she was awarded during a very nice awards banquet that evening. And she also gets $1,000 of personal money for herself from this award. So I'm going to let Sherry come up and talk to you a little bit about what she's going to be using her veneer equipment for with her students.
We have a very exciting opportunity at Oakley. We are going to be using the money to purchase these small computer-type devices that collect data. And these devices have ports in them that you can put in sensors or probes to collect data. And we're going to buy four different probes for each one of these LabQuest II devices, one to measure temperature, one to measure air pressure, one to measure wind speed, and one to measure the amount of moisture in the air. We can put them in these little shoeboxes and drill some holes so the device is safe and the probes can get the weather. And the kids can have a portable weather station and we can have a few of them that we can take around our campus and have more ownership of, hopefully have more ownership of taking data and understanding data and analyzing and interpreting data. We hope to have four to six of these and the students can use them to track the variables throughout the day, put it out in the morning and see what happens, have it collect data all day long. The devices themselves can graph or make tables or, and help interpret the data in terms of taking an average for the day and as well as looking at how things change through the day. We can also look at answering questions like, is our weather the same all over our Oakley campus? And we could put one of our portable weather stations in maybe our partially enclosed courtyard, one out in the middle of our field, one near our parking lot, and have the kids compare and contrast what variables are stable? Are the variables stable throughout the day or are there changes? And why are there changes? Which hopefully will lead to inquiry and research and wanting to know more. Because wanting to know more is important with 5th grades' weather, because they have to go from their own intimate experience with weather all the way out to learning about global wind patterns and how hurricanes move and fronts and the westerlies and convection currents and El Nino and La Nina. So we're hoping that by developing, using their senses, they're collecting data on what they are currently experiencing, that that will be very impactful for them. For instance, I'll give you one last example. If the level of moisture in the air goes up, are we seeing additional cloud cover? Are they starting to experience the difference between the moisture in the air on a clear day versus the moisture in the air on a cloudy day? And so there's more opportunity for ownership, more opportunity for engagement, and we feel like it's going to be very exciting for our Oakley students. Carla and I are going to be developing lessons for this equipment this summer in July. And Brian and Carla have a very strong partnership with a professor of meteorology at UNCA. And we plan to have some consultation opportunities with him to make sure that we are writing the strongest science lessons for our kids as possible. So it's very exciting and I appreciate all the kind words. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Our curriculum feature this evening is called "Celebrating the Pathway to Graduation" in Buncombe County Schools. And we'll hear from our Director of Graduation Initiative, Ms. Kay Lamb. She comes with a troupe.
Yes. We need a minute to rearrange the furniture. Madam Chair, Ms. Swanger, members of the board, the Graduation Initiative team is excited about having this opportunity on the board agenda to, number one, celebrate the accomplishment of reaching 85.3% four-year cohort graduation rate, and number two, to recognize just a few of the wonderful partners that share in that accomplishment with the Graduation Initiative. Just a reminder of the numbers, when the Graduation Initiative began its work, the four-year rate was 73.4% and Buncombe County Schools was losing around 450 students each year as dropouts. We are here to celebrate the achievement of reaching that 85.3% four-year cohort rate and losing only 188 students as dropouts. We continue to say that's 188 too many, but we love the trend, that decreasing trend. We've obviously come a long way, but we didn't make that journey all by ourselves. The Graduation Initiative has been focused on the K-12 program that addresses the needs of students and families at whatever grade level the need surfaces, so that the students can be successful in school. Emily, Jill, and Sharon, my teammates, are going to share the valuable contributions of some of our partners.
Sorry, we had a few technical difficulties getting the slideshow together. But just real quick, to highlight the slides, this shows the increase of the four-year graduation rate and the decrease in our dropout rate since we started collecting data. As we focus first on the elementary and intermediate grade levels and our important partners at that level, we naturally must recognize children first and communities in schools. Allison Jordan, Executive Director, and her colleagues Natasha Adwaters and Lisa Barlow are here tonight. Children First Communities in Schools believes that all children should have the opportunity to thrive. They surround children with support in school, community, and work on public policy to reduce the incidence and impact of poverty. Specifically, last year, they served over 2,800 children through direct services and educational supports. This year, they expanded their Integrated Student Support Program into two more schools, SD's Elementary and Eblen Intermediate, which is in addition to their existing programs at Emma and Johnston Elementary. Their attendance, behavior, course plus parent engagement framework, in conjunction with their three-tiered interventions, enhance their work. They implement evidence-based integrated student supports by putting the right people in the right place at the right time with the right interventions, all to equal success and keep our elementary and intermediate students in school and all the while helping them be successful. Having communities in schools as our partner supports the work of the Graduation Initiative in a profound way at the elementary level. Our sincere thanks to Allison and Children First Communities in Schools for all the wonderful things you do at the elementary and intermediate level.
We're going to wait and do certificates and photos at the very end, if that's okay, Dea, thank you.
Okay, ready? Middle school students, just the mention of this age student sends some adults running the other way. I'll buy the picture. But not our dear partners, the YMCA of Asheville and Western North Carolina, and the United Way of Asheville and Buncombe County. Middle school is a key time in a young person's life. The YMCA seeks to educate, empower, and enrich through their school-based after-school program, the 21st Century Community Learning Centers. These are located at Inca, Irwin, Owen, and Reynolds Middle School. Tonight, we have Heather Diefel, Director of 21st Century Programs for the YMCA Whipus. The 21st Century Community Learning Centers provide a safe environment for middle school students outside the traditional academic day in communities characterized by high poverty. Y staff and tutors provide additional academic support, along with mentoring and coaching, lead hands-on activities, and support community partnerships. Their program is designed to improve academic achievement and engage students in enrichment experience while building leadership skills and confidence. Over 200 students are served each year and you can see the impact and results they bring to our middle school students' lives. The Y is also a partner with the Graduation Initiative in operating the Summer Bridge Transition Program each summer for upcoming sixth graders in several of our school districts. We couldn't manage this program without you. Thank you, Heather, and thank you YMCA for the positive difference you make in our middle schools. We have another extremely valuable integral partner at the middle school level, the United Way of Asheville and Buncombe County. They are represented tonight by Laura Elliott, Director of Middle School Success Program of United Way. She heads up the Middle Grades Network, which uses collective impact approach that brings together Asheville City Schools, Buncombe County Schools, and community partners around in sheer vision of creating success-ready 9th graders and improving graduation rates. They focus on the correlation of poverty and graduation, as our other partners do as well. In Asheville and Buncombe County, children who live in poverty graduate from high school at a rate of 77%, while their classmates graduate at a rate of 90%. And in 2014, more than 750 children in our public schools were homeless. The Middle Grades Network has followed the work and research of Robert Baufos of John Hopkins University, the ABC indicators of students at risk of not graduating high school, attendance, behavior, and failing core subjects. If a student has one or more of these key indicators, they only have a 25% chance of graduating from high school. The work of the Middle Grades Network revolves around the interventions that are key in changing their odds. They use three key strategies to accomplish their goals. Early warning responses. The early warning response system that has developed by the network members under Laura's leadership is the first of its kind in North Carolina. Connecting city and county schools, out-of-school providers, and volunteers through the early warning response systems, dashboard which allows... warning response systems dashboard, which allows all involved to work together to identify when a student is starting to fall apart. Resource coordinators are placed on the middle school campuses to foster and organize strong and impactful partnerships. Who Got You Through? The program recruits a second shift of caring adults to students to stay on track towards success. Thank you, Laura, and United Way for the stellar efforts and the ongoing support you bring to our communities, efforts to see all the students graduate from high school.
Our students may get through middle school, and that brings us to high school. At this age, we are facing tremendous challenges to keep students in school that are not necessarily present prior to this time in their lives. Staying in school is challenged by the need to work to contribute to family support, the need to support their own child, or just being a single mother trying to birth a child and deal with all the responsibilities of that, along with passing math and history classes. We are blessed to have a wonderful organization with whom we partner to help students address this challenge, Mother Love. This evening, we welcome Holly Gillespie, who is the Director of the Mother Love Program. With the YWCA of Asheville's Mother Love Program, young mothers and fathers that learn quickly that they are not alone and that their futures are still bright. Mother Love will be with them during the pregnancy and as they parent their new baby, with the ultimate goal of graduating from high school and pursuing higher education or vocational training. Mother Love takes a multi-pronged approach to helping pregnant and parenting teens stay in school, access postgraduate schooling, develop the skills and knowledge they need to become strong parents, and prevent another teen pregnancy. I've had the flu, and I'm happy. Can you? Can Jill? I'm sorry, I'll be getting ready to go.
The program's two full-time staff members and one contact case manager provide one-on-one counseling, home visits, monthly lunch gathering, and at the school. The evening group meetings with guest speakers, along with crisis intervention. Mother Love is making a difference. For the past 10 years, all participants have graduated from high school or advanced to their next grade level. And partly because of Mother Love's programming, Buncombe County's teen pregnancy rate has dropped from 40 pregnancies for every 1,000 girls in 2010 to 35.4 in 2012. We know that the education level of a mother is the best predictor of their child's future success, yet only 36% of pregnant and parenting students graduate from high school in North Carolina. So the work and success rate of Mother Love is impressive. Thank you, Holly, and YWCA for bringing Mother Love programs to our teens, thereby keeping them in school and helping them learn to deal with their new, expanded responsibilities.
We've recognized partners at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Now to recognize a partner that is truly the partner that spans all grade levels and needs, the Eblin Foundation. As the Board is aware, Bill, if you'll come forward. Bill Murdock, the Eblin, and the Eblin Foundation was an original partner with Dr. Baldwin and Buncombe County Schools in the creation of the Graduation Initiative. Bill Murdock, as Director of the Foundation, has been with us, working hand-in-hand since the inception of the Graduation Initiative, and it is fitting that he is with us tonight as we celebrate the accomplishments that have been achieved. Having the Eblin Foundation as a key partner allows us to do our work every day, knowing that whatever obstacle or barrier we come up against when working with our students and their families, we simply need to call Bill or Susan Riddle at Eblin, and we have the support that we need. This slide, I hope you can see it, shows the number of referrals made to Eblin during the first semester of this school year by the Graduation Initiative team and our school-based colleagues, counselors, social workers, and so forth. There were 652 referrals with a monetary value contributed by Eblin of almost $65,000. Things like school supplies, senior project support, gas, shoes, clothing, coats, you name it, Eblin is there for us. The next couple of slides reflect the vast number of programs that the Eblin Foundation leads each year. Familiar names like Tools for Schools, Teeth Sealant Program, the St. Nicholas Project, Joyful Home for the Holidays. Last year, they served 51,506 people to the tune of almost $1.5 million of support to our families and students in Buncombe County. If anyone asks me, what exactly does the Graduation Initiative do? My short answer is, we remove barriers. We remove barriers that might prevent students from staying in school and graduating. The only way, I'm not finished with you, Bill. We know where you are. The only way that we can do this is through our partnership with the Eblin Foundation. Bill, we owe you a heartfelt thank you for all you and the Eblin Foundation has done and continues to do to help students graduate. Thank you. I want to share one story of many that I could share that highlight the work of our three amazing Graduation Initiative specialists, but also illustrates how we depend on the Eblin Foundation every day. It also illustrates how the smallest thing has the potential to derail a student's opportunity to be successful, and how discovery and attending to the small things make a significant difference. These three ladies are the most intuitive people I've ever worked with. I swear, they must be psychic. They have the ability to know something to be the case without any rational evidence to prove that, but they're always right. One of our graduation specialists is sitting at an at-risk team meeting in one of our high schools when they begin to discuss a female student who has inexplicably began missing lots of days. This is uncharacteristic for this young lady. The graduation specialist uses her laptop to look up the girl's attendance and points out that she is missing every other day, which seems odd. Then she uses Power School to see if there are siblings enrolled in Buncombe County Schools. And yes, there's a younger sister at the middle school. The graduation specialist discovers that the sister is absent on the days that the high school student is in school. She volunteers to talk with the high school girl. After developing a level of trust with this young lady, the girl is comfortable enough with her to tell her that she and her sister are sharing one pair of shoes. They are doing this so they can be in school as often as possible and try to keep up with the work. It seems both parents were without jobs, excuse me, and they were struggling, and as often is the case, they were too proud and too embarrassed to seek help. Our specialists worked with the parents and with their approval contacted Susan Riddle and Bill at Eblin, and problem solved. Shoe vouchers, food vouchers, and everything they needed to get them through some hard times until they could get back on their feet. We remove barriers. But as I pointed out earlier, we can't do it alone. Tonight, we have recognized our partners that are critical to the work of supporting students and families and helping all students to have the opportunity to stay in school, be successful, and graduate with a diploma. We would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the contributions of so many others in the central office and the schools that support and enhance our work in so many ways. The Board of Education, obviously, for your support. Dr. Baldwin, Suzanne, Joe, for your leadership. The folks in finance, and transportation, and maintenance, and child nutrition, we work with them all. David Thompson for the amazing student-centered programs that he has brought to Buncombe County Schools, specifically the compassionate schools model. Our grantors, the Sisters of Mercy Foundation, the Buncombe County Commissioners, and the Asheville Merchants Foundation. And obviously, our principals, counselors, social workers, teachers, and school nurses are invaluable partners to us each and every day. Tonight, we recognize all of our partners and celebrate together the good things happening in our community around the importance of education in the lives of all of our children. Thank you. Partners, to please come back up to the center of the stage area, floor area, and Suzanne
I was involved with these agencies when these ideas started.
and Ms. Franklin, if you would, we have certificates and photo opportunities. Van and Stacia.
I won't tell you how many years ago, but I saw the need.
Mr. Tiff, I think it's got hidden.
I had no idea how to work through and make it happen.
Thank you.
And now, all of these people in this wonderful community have gone together to work for, to help these children succeed, not only in school, but in their home and in their personal life. And I truly personally appreciate that. It's now time for our public comment.
The comments tonight, John Brigham and Lisa Baldwin.
John Brigham. You go to the microphone.
Thank you, School Board and people in attendance. I'm grateful to be here. Education is a messy business. You know, you've got, you know, like Common Core, and you've got alternative learners, and you've got people in poverty, and it's a nutty business. Like principals are like, we've got to do something about it, we've got to straighten this out, and School Board's saying, well, we need to restructure or something. The people that are in the business, and the people that count, love it. I'm, of course, referring to teachers. I want to emphasize that teachers are the center of everything, and you can't get away from that, and I don't think anybody would argue on that. So emphasize that teachers are the center of the whole thing. So the two issues are, who do we bring into the business, and how do we treat the people that we have? Okay, subsidized housing for teachers. How does this fit into all this? I think that this is, I think that this is a really bad idea. The one advantage I can see of it is that you could use it to screen your teachers. So that, for example, a teacher comes to you, and you know, a candidate, a candidate teacher comes in, and you could, you could say, you know, we have subsidized housing for you, we can put you with other teachers, and you can live with other teachers, and we'll give you a break on your rent. Okay, if the person reacts with absolute horror and indignation, then that would be a sign of a good teacher. Okay, let's say that, let's say that, you know, we can give you a break on your, on your rent, and you can live with other teachers, and the guy goes, or the woman goes, oh, really? I was brought up in Section 8 housing, that sounds good, free money, yeah, that's good, live with other teachers? I don't want to live with anybody else. Get married and have a family, I don't want to do that. And then, I can see it coming down from Raleigh, it's like, well, we need to give, well, we need to give people, now, we give them subsidized housing, we don't have to give teachers raises. I think this is a very insidious and nasty, nasty trend. My mother was a teacher. She was proud of the life that she led, she was proud of the three sons that she raised, and she was proud of her career as a teacher. And I'm standing up here in defense of my mother and all the teachers in America, as far as I'm concerned. If you put teachers in subsidized housing, you are washing teaching out of the professional arena. I feel very strongly about this. I think that, I think that this is a very bad idea. So they say, well, this is a Band-Aid on a different problem. I don't think this is a Band-Aid on a different problem. I think this is a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next person? Stacia? Oh, you've already said. Sorry.
I'm Lisa Baldwin. I'm a parent of a student at Reynolds High School. I want to address a resolution on your agenda tonight regarding increasing per pupil funding and fully funding public schools in North Carolina. This is a request that you're sending to the North Carolina General Assembly. However, according to the most recent data compiled by the National Education Association, North Carolina taxpayers spend over $8,700 on each student per year. This is also known as per pupil expenditure. New York State spends the most at $18,000 per pupil. New Mexico ranks in the middle of the pack at $10,000, and Arizona spends the least at $6,600 per pupil. This report puts us, puts North Carolina at 45th. Does that sound terrible? It does, doesn't it? I think that's in your report, too. North Carolina public schools, however, receive among the highest percentages of their funding from state dollars, ranking 11th in the nation and second in the southeast. That was 11th in the nation and second in the southeast for our state funding of education. In the U.S., K-12 education is funded by three sources: federal dollars, state dollars, and local dollars. Here in North Carolina, the federal government provides only about 14% to 16% of K-12 funding, with state government picking up most of the tab at 60%. Local governments contribute less than a quarter of the cost of educating our children. Yet, according to your resolution, you feel it would be a burden to ask our county commissioners for more money for education. State, federal, and local funds combined, North Carolina spends approximately $12 billion on K-12 education every year, and that does not include the hundreds of millions of dollars spent on school buildings and the debt used to build and maintain them. So my point is, I think it's a matter of priorities about where we're spending our money on education here in Buncombe County. As you know, Buncombe gets extra money, 12 million or more a year, from a special sales tax that most counties don't get. Yet, all that money is going into a slush fund for construction, even as our enrollment declines, down over 1,000 students just in the past two years alone. This money could easily be converted to the classroom. So it's a matter of prioritizing spending the tax dollars on students, on teaching and learning, rather than on bricks and mortar. Also, you might want to focus your resolution on the way funding, the funding formula works in North Carolina. Right now, principals don't have enough autonomy over their own school budget. Research has found that when principals are allowed 25 to 50% of their budget...
Thank you. Can I finish my sentence, please? Your time's up. Next on the agenda is, we have a report on the Reynolds District Family-to-Family Presentation. We welcome Tynna Stovall and Cindy Oak. For those of you that may not know, Tynna and Cindy were both Buncombe County School employees and worked as counselors in the Reynolds District. I think that's the reason they're wearing green.
Once a rocket, always a rocket. Good evening. I'm Cindy Oak, and I retired from Reynolds Middle School. And Ms. Franklin, and Board members, Ms. Swanger, thank you for allowing us to present this evening. Presenting with me is Ms. Stovall, Tynna Stovall, retired Reynolds High School counselor, and students who are representing Reynolds High School. We give a special thanks to Tammy Young, who also retired, but is from our school, but she's working again, so, part-time, and we appreciate her technical support. We also appreciate Ms. Sellers coordinating an activity bus for all of us to get here, particularly because we did not have access to a city bus from the school to the central office. You can use the URL that you were given to follow along with our presentation or refer to in the future. Okay. We represent the Community Volunteer Organization, Family-to-Family, in the Reynolds District. For those of you that may not know, Tynna and Cindy were both Buncombe County School employees and worked as counselors in the Reynolds District. I think that's the reason they're wearing green.
Once a rocket, always a rocket. Good evening, I'm Cindy Oak, and I retired from Reynolds Middle School. And Ms. Franklin, and Board members, Ms. Swanger, thank you for allowing us to present this evening. Presenting with me is Ms. Stovall, Tynna Stovall, retired Reynolds High School counselor, and students who are representing Reynolds High School. We give a special thanks to Tammy Young, who also retired, but is from our school, but she's working again, so, part-time, and we appreciate her technical support. We also appreciate Ms. Sellers coordinating an activity bus for all of us to get here, particularly because we did not have access to a city bus from the school to the central office. You can use the URL that you were given to follow along with our presentation or refer to in the future. Okay. Is that up? It's up here. There you go. Okay. We represent the community volunteer organization, Family to Family, in the Reynolds District, which connects families of faith to their neighboring schools to help meet the needs of impoverished youth, needs not being met by any other agency. We have copies of a recent Fairview Town Crier article written by Cindy McMahon explaining our organization. In October of 2013, Family to Family approached the administrators, counselors, social workers with this question. What is your greatest long-term need that is impacting the success of your impoverished students? Their unanimous response was the lack of public transportation to Reynolds Middle and High Schools. At our first meeting with the Asheville Transit Projects Coordinator, we outlined steps to take that resulted in data collection, which supported a need for public transportation from the closest bus stop at River Ridge Shopping Center at I-240, down Highway 74A to the Reynolds Schools, a distance of 1.9 miles. We prepared student-parent surveys administered on paper and in electronic formats. 971 student and parent responses were recorded.
I am Lexi, I am one of the 848 student responses to the online survey. I live in Oakley and have not been able to participate in GSA and other after-school activities, such as football games or tutoring, because both my parents work very hard and very long hours, so they are not able to give me a ride to some events.
My name is Kat, and I live along Highway 74A between River Ridge and Reynolds Campus. I have not been able to participate in clubs, school plays, and events because I have no mode of transportation. My parents currently work 30 minutes away from home and will not get home until around 5:30. We barely have a car at home to pick me up after school, and I've always wanted to do this because people need a way to get to stuff and do stuff.
More information regarding the survey that we conducted can be found on our link, which is located on the left side of the picto chart. The survey data and graphs have been provided to us by the Reynolds AP Statistics Class.
DeAngelo says, "I was sick one day at school and wanted to leave, but I could not because I had no transportation at home. As the day progressed, it got worse and I felt horrible."
Hi, I'm Jessica, and I wanted to participate in a musical theater, Hello Dolly, in my school, and I couldn't because I didn't have transportation. And Donna says, "I could not stay after school for tutoring because my mom works at night, and I wouldn't have any transportation home from school."
I am August, and after staying for detention due to tardies, I had to walk home in the rain about seven miles because I had no other transportation.
Interviews with Highway 74A business managers highlighted the reality that students wanting to participate in extracurricular activities routinely hang out unsupervised at the nearest businesses until the start of the activity, which could be anywhere from one to four We learned from our survey that families believe that the cost of riding the bus, public bus, is very affordable. We have also discovered that fewer students are getting their driver's licenses due to the expenses. Our map indicates that nearly all of our middle school students and over 60% of our high school students live in neighborhoods already served by a city bus. They pay city taxes, and yet they cannot utilize the bus to get to and from their schools. Our map shows the Oakley, Hall Creek, and Bell District lines in blue, and their location compared to the middle and high schools. The area within the city limits that is also within the Reynolds District is shaded in green. The red and orange lines indicate the major roads of I-40 and I-240 and the Parkway.
Rihanna says, "I live in Shiloh, and I use the city bus regularly to go to the mall. I'll be comfortable using public transportation."
Asia says, "I live in Hall Creek, and I use the city bus regularly to go to the mall and downtown. I would be comfortable utilizing public transportation for staying after school to do sports, activities, and other extracurricular activities such as ROTC, and just hanging out with my friends. I feel like I'm always at home due to my dad always working and not, and me not having a way to get to and from. Now that, now that it would be a possibility to do it, to do that, it makes me feel like I'm not always going to be the odd friend out that never gets to do anything."
Here is the location of the schools and the locations of the nearest city bus stops, which is a distance of 1.9 miles. We want to also thank Kay Lamb, Buncombe County's Graduation Initiative Coordinator, for meeting with us and sharing her research and anecdotal information that support the connection between school success and failure when lack of transportation negatively impacts our students. Jessie, a fifth-year student, could have graduated if he had attended an after-school credit recovery opportunity. Jessie did not get to participate because he did not have the transportation home each evening. Both parents worked shifts in a factory. Jessie dropped out of school, needing only two credits to graduate. At the recommendation of the Asheville Transit Project Coordinator, we also gathered data from the community residents and business owners affected by the lack of public transportation on Highway 74A. Our results show that 73.5% of the respondents would use the public bus if available. We learned from an Oakley parent that once her child began at the middle school, she could not easily pick her child up when he was sick during the school day because of their dependency on public transportation. Businesses along Highway 74A suffer also. Two highway applicants, I'm sorry, two Highway 74A business managers indicated that the unemployment office limited referrals of job applicants to people who have individual transportation. In addition, management shared that they encounter the daily dilemma of employees arranging transportation to and from work, which affects their work dependability.
I am Bobby. Every one of these students come from a different background, but they all have something in common, and it has to do with the restrictions of public transportation. After Ms. Ward came to me about a group that I would be meeting about public transportation, I knew I had to have my voice in it, because of my own issues and because I've always had to ride the bus. The whole night, I couldn't sleep, because I knew I had to make this change for all the students and myself who have these restrictions. I have not been able to go to makeup attendance, athletic events because of no transportation to the Reynolds Campus. I made this petition about providing public bus transportation to the Reynolds Campus, and in two hours, I had 216 signatures to fill six pages. This is something I believe will benefit today's students as well as students tomorrow. We will greatly appreciate the School Board's official support of our project.
In addition to the specific impact on student lives, they cannot access the very programs designed to aid them in completing high school successfully. Therefore, not only do we ask for your endorsement of our proposal, we need our School Board to plan and work closely with the county commissioners and city council to do whatever it takes to remove this transportation barrier for the Reynolds students and families as a way of supporting our county-wide initiative of increasing the student graduation rate. Thank you for your time and attention. If there are no questions, then if you don't mind, please excuse us so we can return our students to the high school, so that they can meet their rides home, there is no city bus.
I, first, I'm sure all Board members want to thank you for the work that you've done, and particularly for your students, and the strength that it took to come and represent their position and to ask us to, to help. You have certainly called our attention to this problem, and we'll certainly see what we can do.
And you'll be going to the Commissioners' meeting next week, is that right?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Gosh, it gives me chills, you give those Commissioners everything you gave us. Moving to the action agenda, the first item is Budget Amendment Four. Are there questions for Ms. Frisbee? Okey-dokey, then I will entertain a motion to approve Budget Amendment Four.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the recommendation for audit firm for years ending in June 30, 2016, '17, and '18. That's also Ms. Frisbee. Are there questions in this regard?
Matt, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Frisbee.
No, you go ahead.
No, go ahead. You first, ladies first. My mother, my mother, God rest her soul, would not be happy if I jumped in front of you, so you go right ahead.
I do not have questions.
Well, they're arguing, is it typically a... Is it typically a two- or three-year commitment that we do? I don't remember that in the past, is it?
It is, our Board policy says we can come, a three-year commitment, and then we have the option to extend for two additional years.
Okay, and then how long, I've read this, but it was this morning, how, how long has it been since, we've been with them for six, for a while, with the current...
2009.
Yeah, '07, okay.
You want to go? I'm going to.
Have you all worked out your differences?
Yeah, we've worked it out. I have a question, and it, when I saw this and read the full fee quotes, it reminded me of when I was coaching college basketball, I went recruiting one time, and I was in a, in a gym, we'd all heard about a player, and Duke was there, North Carolina was there, and Kentucky was there, and I was there from UNC Asheville, and I was in the wrong, I was the one that was in the wrong place. And when I look at this number, it, it gives me pause that, you know, I did a little Google search, and it, that a reputable firm can be so far under what the other two quotes were, and I wonder if, from a, from a legal standpoint, Mr. Campbell, this just gives me pause. I, it's not that I want to spend more money than we need to spend, but this is, this is half of what Dixon Hughes and Johnson Price and Sprinkle bid, without knowing what, although they said, I believe it was $3,500, they expected to be out-of-pocket cost in terms of travel.
Yes, sir.
It seems unusual to me. Help me with that.
Well, it could be on the other end that the current auditing firm might have been a little bit higher than, than normal. I don't know the history, but in 2012, the fee was $76,000, and then it went up to $92,000 the next year with the current firm. I, I don't know why, I don't know, there, there were more hours tied to the audit, but that's basically, when we, we did, as this says, Anderson Smith-Wyke does 40 school systems, so I compared their fee with systems comparable to our school, our school size, and they ranged between $55,000 to $45,000. So they're, they're comparable, and it's basically based on your, your student population, so.
And if we, if we award that, are we locked into that number, or are they gonna, is there, is there something in the, the contract and/or the document, or would that be something that still need to be worked out, that, here's what I don't want, you hear about this in other places, what I don't want to do is vote for a $60,000 bid that's based on such a minimal amount of work, that when they actually do the audit, and the amount of hours it takes to do it for a system our size, we're back up at $110,000, $115,000.
Right. Now, the audit contract, and Ms. Frisbee can speak to this, requires a basic level of review and services...
Absolutely.
...as dictated by the state of North Carolina and by auditing standards. So that includes a full audit.
Full audit, absolutely.
And in my experience, the only time that you could have additional fees under an audit contract is by request of the school district, for them to perform additional services beyond the baseline requirement. So I'm not concerned about getting a bill or having a request for additional work unless we asked for it. I think from there, just, just looking at the prices, as to the ultimate quote, you have competitive bids, different firms of different sizes, and this is not unusual, Mr. Fairley would probably tell you in, in construction, too, is sometimes you'll see a pretty good swing with firms and other things. So this is a service contract, so it's not a straight, you cannot, it's not a commodity, it's a service.
Okay.
And the prices reflect what the, the firms think it will take in terms of their time and their expertise to provide you with a sufficient audit.
Right. And there is, there would probably be a minimal increase each year, like 1%, the quote, just for...
But we would deal with that, whether it was them or Johnson Price and Sprinkle, I mean, we've dealt with that in the past.
Absolutely. I do have Mike Wyke with me, if you all have any questions, with Anderson Smith and Mike, so.
Well, I don't know, maybe I shouldn't have, I didn't know you were here. Can you, just from a, from an industry perspective, and I'm not questioning, I, believe me, I want to save as much money as I can to, to, to do other things that go back to kids, but...
Yeah, I think it's actually public knowledge, the, the audit fees for any of the 115 districts throughout the state, and if you would perform an analysis of the fees that have been paid versus other districts through other firms, not just our firm, in the past, your fees were, were probably a little bit out of line, to be honest, if you would do that analysis. And like Ms. Frisbee had said, we audit 41 districts throughout the state. We all came from, all of our partners came from Dixon Odham back in the day, and changed to Dixon Hughes Goodman. We split off, and what our focus was governmental, and now, almost, I mean, 90% of my business is going to be School Board audits. We do not do tax returns, it's School Board audits is what we do. And if you would compare the fees based on ADM, the, the quote we gave you is exactly in line with other districts. When we met with Ms. Frisbee, that was my main concern, I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that, you know, probably it's going to be eye-opening with the number we give versus what we think is fair. And like Mr. Campbell had said, the contract is really a three-party contract. It will be with us, the auditors, you, Buncombe County Schools, and the state of North Carolina signs the contract as well. So there's nothing, we come back and say we need more money, we've got three parties in the contract, and that's the fee.
Thank you. Will the "not to exceed" language that's in this document we have reviewed, not to exceed $3,500 per year as far as travel and incidental expenses, will that be reflected in the official contract to be signed by your firm?
Yeah, we can definitely add that, that's, that's no problem at all. That was verbal communication.
Yes, sir.
But whenever we do the, the formal contract, there's a line item, we can put "not to exceed."
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I didn't have a question, I just had a comment, just, basically, I'm very glad we're doing this, and, and I think it's, what we've learned is that it's high time. And it's, it's high time, both in terms of the fee that we're paying, but also, it's financially healthy to get fresh eyes on, on the book. So I'm looking forward to, to how this turns out, and I think this is a good, good approach. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd entertain a motion to accept...
Thank you.
To approve the contract services with firm Anderson Smith and Wyke, PLLC.
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? What does PLLC stand for?
Professional Limited Life Activity Company.
Limited liability people.
I don't have those note, letters after mine.
Same level of protection our firm has.
That means you have...
Thank you.
...an insurance policy, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have several insurance plans.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Owen High and Erwin High Synthetic Turf Field Replacement Initiative. Initiative Contract. Do any of you have questions for Mr. Fairley?
Madam Chair, I would move that we award the contract as has been presented tonight for the synthetic turf fields at these two high schools.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I guess we'll be putting down some turf. The next one is North Buncombe High School and Enka High School Authorization to Award Contract for Food Lab Renovations. That's also Mr. Fairley. Any questions for Mr. Fairley?
I have a question. This is a question I asked you earlier, but it seems like it might be helpful for the public to hear the answer as well. Can you talk a little bit about the differences between these two projects and why the one at North Buncombe is so much more expensive?
Yes. The North Buncombe Project is a Pro Start program, which Christie Cheek can speak to the curriculum of it, but it's a commercial program, close to culinary, very intense program. The space involves two rooms, whereas at Enka, it's a more traditional foods program. It is a mix of commercial and residential. It involves one room, so there's simply less space, less intense equipment. We're working with -- we're able to work with the space better at Enka. We don't have to tear up the floor and put utilities in. We can work with what we've got.
Thank you. Does that cover it? Is she --
It does.
Anyone else have questions for Mr. Fairley? I'd entertain a motion that we accept this recommendation.
I would move to accept the recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, I will call on Ms. Churchill to read the Resolution Regarding Increasing Per-Pupil Funding and Fully Funding Public Schools in North Carolina. Ms. Churchill.
The resolution of the Buncombe County Board of Education regarding increasing per-pupil funding and fully funding public schools in North Carolina. Whereas the North Carolina Constitution includes an obligation to provide a sound, basic education to all school-aged children in our state, acknowledging that local and state officials have an obligation to prepare all students for a productive future; whereas we acknowledge that talent and ingenuity can be found among all our children; whereas public education is the cornerstone of our democracy and the economic well-being of our state; whereas inflation-adjusted per-pupil spending is still below pre-recession levels; whereas in terms of per-pupil spending, an NEA report ranks North Carolina 46th in the United States for 2014-15; whereas in 2008, North Carolina teacher salaries ranked 25th in the nation but had fallen to 46th by 2014-15; and without highly effective classroom teachers, students in North Carolina will not be prepared for quality, well-paying careers, and our state is at risk of enhancing the potential for a globally competitive workforce. Whereas research demonstrates the cost-effectiveness of pre-K services; whereas approximately 60% of public education funding comes from the state, while the remainder is funded by local sources and the federal government; and whereas it is not wise or productive to fund public education through a reliance on increased property taxes or by forcing local officials to cut important programs or positions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Buncombe County Board of Education respectfully requests that the North Carolina General Assembly, number one, fully fund public education in every LEA to reflect growth and student needs; two, reinstate K-12 enrollment growth also known as ADM funding as part of the continuation budget; and three, utilize existing state revenue streams to maximize educational opportunity for students, restore competitive teacher pay, and avoid placing an unacceptable financial burden on local governments to provide all students with a sound, basic education.
Thank you. This is, let's see, all those in favor of this --
We'd get a motion to accept it.
Okay. Let's have a motion to accept it, the resolution.
I make the motion that we accept the resolution.
It's read. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So it's read and adopted the 14th day of April, 2016. Thank you, Ms. Churchill. At this time, it is time for us to discuss the appointment to the AB Tech -- our appointment to the AB Tech Board of Trustees. And I would like for the people here to know that Mr. Richard Hurley has served on the AB Tech Board for over 20 years, and he has decided at this time not to apply or continue to his position on the AB Tech Board. So at this time, we have an applicant, Mr. Bill Murdock. And let me just digress a minute. We set up a procedure last year, this board did, in accepting applications for the positions on the AB Tech Board. And Mr. Murdock filled out the application, and we have chosen, hopefully, him to serve on the AB Tech Board. So I would entertain a motion that we do just that.
Madam Chair, it would be my honor to make this recommendation that we accept the application of Mr. Murdock and that we, as a school board, appoint him as one of our representatives to the Board of Trustees in AB Tech.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, Mr. Murdock, now you're on another board. And we want to publicly thank Richard for what he has done for us in representing us on the AB Tech Board, and I am sure that Mr. Murdock will continue in that venue. Now, it's time for the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are the minutes from the March 3 open session, the personnel report, Enka High School use of capital outlay and athletic allotment, academic summer school plans, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. On the information agenda, we have financial reports, notification of informal construction and repair contracts and change orders, and we have several policies for first reading. I wanted to ask Ms. Swanger, are these policies changed because we're seeking to align ourselves? Tell us why we're looking at these.
Yes, ma'am. We have made changes based on state policy and best information that we have at the time.
All right. Any questions from the board members in this regard? All right. Then I would make the announcements of future meetings. We have an NCSAA and an NCASA Legislative Priorities Press Conference that'll be held April 20 here in our Minitorium, and that is for superintendents and educational leaders in Region 8 and Region 7. And then Buncombe County Schools Top Scholars Banquet will be the 21st at 6:00 p.m. at the Renaissance. There will be a special call meeting of the Board of Education on May 5 at 12:00 in the multipurpose room here in this facility. And I believe that is regarding facilities, isn't it? It's a work session. And the Board of Education has its regular meeting on May 5 at 6:30 here in the Minitorium. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any -- a second?
Second.
Ah, I thought some people wanted to stay here a little while longer. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Let's go home.